And now call, call to order.
I now call to order the May ninth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting of the Town of Wellington Board of Trustees, time being six thirty-one P M. Please rise for the Pledge of Leaders.
Pledge of Leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mister Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Certainly. Trusty Gator?
Here.
Trusty Daly?
Present.
Trusty Mason?
Here.
Trusty Teets?
Here.
Trusty Wiegand?
Here.
Mayor Porter McDonald? Mayor Shosse?
Here.
Thank you.
Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening? Are there any conflicts of interest?
Oh, I'm sorry. I would like to remove the crack seal off of the consent agenda. The twenty twenty-three Old Town Street Repair, item number-
The asphalt concrete-
Yep.
Repair.
Thank you.
Are there any conflicts of interest related to the items on the agenda this evening?
Excuse me, uh, Trusty Gator, could I just clarify? You wanted to pull that item from the consent agenda, is that correct?
Correct, yes, to the action items.
Understood. I believe that that requires a motion. No, okay, my mistake.
You're good.
All right, now we will move on to item B one, public comment. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items are asked to sign up for a podium. Uh, when at the podium, please state your name for the record, and you will be limited to three minutes. Okay. Now we'll move on to item B two, the proclamations. There are going to be four proclamations this evening. Uh, the first one is going to be for Peace Officer Week. Whereas deputies of the Lerner County Sheriff's Department stand watch over our citizens, selflessly risking their lives to protect individuals, families, neighborhoods, and property against crime. And whereas it is important that all citizens recognize the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of law, local law enforcement agencies. And whereas Monday, May fifteenth, is observed nationally as Peace Officer Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And whereas the deputies of Lerner County Sheriff's Office, by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered dedicated service to the community. Now therefore, I, Kaler Shosse, Mayor of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the week of May fourteenth through the twentieth, twenty twenty-three, as Peace Officer Week in the Town of Wellington, and hereby publicly salute the service of the law enforcement officers in our community. I'd like to welcome you two gentlemen up here. The next proclamation we have is for Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas prioritization of mental health is essential to the well-being of our town as life is filled with many difficulties and stressors. And whereas prevention and awareness of mental health issues are an effective means of reducing the burden of mental health conditions in our residents. And whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, and resident in our town shares the responsibility to acknowledge mental health issues and support prevention efforts while encouraging healthy living. Now therefore, I, Kaler Shosse, Mayor of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month. As mayor, I call upon the citizens, public, and private institutions, businesses, and schools in our town to recommit to advancing understanding of mental health issues in our community, and I encourage our residents to support the need for appropriate access to services for those affected with mental health issues. And I don't have anybody to hand this off to. The, oh yeah, the next one that I have is going to be for Childcare Provider Day. Whereas a Saturday before Mother's Day is celebrated nationally as Provider Appreciation Day. And whereas it is important that all citizens recognize the time, energy, dedication, and commitment necessary to raise healthy children. And whereas less than one-third of children in America have a full-time stay-at-home care provider, and many parents choose to seek external care providers in the community. And whereas the parents of our community place their trust in childcare providers that fill this vital role of sharing child-rearing responsibilities with parents. Now therefore, I, Kaler Shosse, Mayor of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, do hereby proclaim May twelfth as Childcare Provider Day in the Town of Wellington, and encourage all citizens to thank childcare providers in our community. And then last but not least is going to be Kids to Parks Day. Whereas May twentieth, twenty twenty-three, is the thirteenth Kids to Parks Day organized and implemented by the National Park Trust, held annually on the third Saturday of May. Whereas Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outside and visit local parks, public lands, and waters. And whereas Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors. And whereas Kids to Parks Day will recognize the importance of recreating, or yeah, recreating responsibility while enjoying the benefits of the outdoors. And whereas Kids to Parks Day will foster future outdoor enthusiasts and help with developing the next generation of park stewards by encouraging kids with memorable outdoor experiences. Now therefore, I, Kaler Shosse, Mayor of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, do hereby proclaim May twentieth, twenty twenty-three, as Kids to Parks Day in the Town of Wellington, and urge all fellow citizens to celebrate our community's youth and nature by going outdoors. Okay, uh, on to the consent agenda for this evening. It's going to consist of the April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting Minutes. May I get a motion to approve?
I make a, uh, make a motion to approve the April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three minutes.
I'll second.
May I get a roll call, please?
Certainly. Trusty Wiegand?
Yes.
Trusty Mason?
Yes.
Trusty Daly?
Yes.
Trusty Gator?
Yes.
Trusty Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and then, uh, before we move on to the action items, uh, I know last meeting we started the time uh, limits for trustees, uh, decided that we will have three minutes to ask questions, solid three minutes, and then the answers will follow. Um, if more time is needed, or you believe more time is needed, at that point, you can request it, and then at that point, I'll say yea or nay. That being said, um, please keep time, Mister Moose. Um, all right, so next we will proceed to the action items for this evening, three items, or now four items in the section will be presented, or three of them will be presented by the Deputy Director of Public Works, Miss Megan Smith. First, we will consider ordinance number zero five dash twenty twenty-three, and ordinance repealing ordinance number six dash twenty twenty-one for municipal utility fees.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and trustees, Megan Smith, Deputy Director of Public Works, um, like to make a fast joke, but normally it's the Cody Show, and today it's the Megan Show. Um, and he's not even here. Good for him. So this evening we do have three, uh, kind of interrelated ordinances or resolutions for you, starting with an ordinance to repeal an existing ordinance, number six, twenty twenty-one, from the municipal utility fees. Um, so the purpose that original ordinance was adopted in twenty twenty-one to set all water and wastewater tap fees, water meter charges, raw water dedication, and cash-in-lie rates all in one. And we have since, uh, moved forward with separating these, um, items. The water and wastewater rates were already superseded by ordinance number sixteen, twenty twenty-two. And then of the remaining portions, we will be bringing with you my third resolution this evening, um, moving the meter fees to be set in our fee schedule, which is a more appropriate place for that. And then we're looking to separate out the cash-in-lie requirements and the raw water dedication requirements to, um, its own resolution as the, the, both the timing and the need for updating of these, um, items kind of hinge on separate, um, impacts in the community and the economic drivers. And so it makes sense to be able to have those, uh, be looked at separately and not always all together. Um, do you have any questions as this being, um, presented to you this evening, that repeal or master repeal?
No questions.
He, yeah, Dan might be able to explain the necessity of it more, I don't know, but-
I think Megan did a great job there, but it's, w- we're doing a lot of cleanup of, you know, as we talked about with the last one, we're doing a lot of cleanup, assessment of the code and cleanup. It, with this one, um, we have, and some ordinances that have, as she said, has been partially superseded. And we also have the fee schedule, especially around the fee schedule and setting those fees where sometimes we have to repeal old ordinances and then put those in the right place. So the first one here is an ordinance just repealing that old one, um, and then the second two items reset some of those items. And then on the fee schedule itself, it brings the meter charges in line with other, with other items that are on the fee schedule. The idea there is it's, the fee schedule is to be looked at annually. Of course, we're right now adjusting it a little more often than annually as we kind of catch things up. But that'd be a good, when that's brought up, kind of at the, at the same time, a good idea to review those sorts of charges like near charges. So really, this is just a procedural item to kind of clean it all up, and that's why it's three separate votes.
Questions, comments? All right, are there any comments from the public on this agenda item? No? We have a motion and a second on this agenda item.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number zero five dash twenty twenty-three, and ordinance repealing ordinance number six dash twenty twenty-one for municipal utility fees.
Second?
Um, at this point, we'll go back, or do we need to do? Yeah. Okay.
We need to take, take each item and-
Perfect.
Roll call, please. Certainly. Trusty Mason?
Yes.
Trusty Teets?
Yes.
Trusty Wiegand?
Yes.
Trusty Gator?
Yes.
Trusty Daly?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next item will be the Consider Resolution Number seventeen dash twenty twenty-three, Resolution Establishing Raw Water Dedication Requirements for Water Tap Servicing Residential Units and Establishing Payments for Cash in Lou of Raw Water Dedication Requirements. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. So as you guys are all aware, town code actually, um, requires wa- raw water dedication to sat, or excuse me, requires dedication to satisfy our raw water requirements, um, for utility customers. It does also allow for, at the town's discretion, our ability to accept cash payment in lieu of that dedication. Uh, so this resolution is setting both of those, um, updating that based on direction that, that I received from a work session presentation in March of this year. Um, and it does reflect those recommendations. So in terms of the raw water requirement, so that is the amount of, of for, I guess, a, a water resources term of wet water that's required to be brought to the utility in order to meet the requirement for the long-term demand of a new utility customer. We're looking at reducing that indoor-only residential requirement to point two-five acre feet. Currently it's set at point three-two acre feet. We are looking at reducing, um, the standard single-family requirement to a point-five acre foot per unit or per dwelling unit, reducing that down from, uh, point five-eight. And then we're also introducing a more separate, um, we had separated in the previous resolution that there, we had, or rather, we had lined it out in our, our schedule that there was a multifamily, um, but now we're actually looking at that multifamily dedication separately, able to do some analysis separate from that to set that dedication and out, uh, raw water dedication at point one acre foot per unit. And just as a reminder, that is for, in that multifamily scenario, that is for indoor-only, uh, multifamily, uh, developments coming forward in the future. We'll be required to have a separate irrigation-only tap to, to handle all the irrigation needs. Um, and then there, it does note in the packet material that raw water dedication for commercial developments, uh, will be set on a case-by-case basis at this point still. And then for irrigation requirements, it will be set based on the, um, a conservative estimate of the irrigation and the proposed irrigation requirements for the landscape, um, standards that we have put in place. Um, that's for those irrigation-only taps, it would be part of larger H O I developments, or again, large commercial or, um, multifamily. Um, and then beyond that, uh, we'd be looking at updating the cash-in-lie value. I know you're all aware of the rapid increase in, in cash and price, uh, associated with all water along the front range. So, um, the value of the shares that we have historically been taken, uh, which are North Pooter Irrigation Company shares, um, and that is what our, uh, raw water requirement, rather, our cash-in-lie requirement has been set on, uh, based on especially, um, starting in twenty twenty, there was a new methodology that was developed for that latest update in twenty twenty. Um, staff is utilizing that same update, or excuse me, that same methodology that utilizes the last three years of share prices um, to, to estimate and predict what next year's share price will be, allowing the town to try and have some, um, increase. As we know, it's increasing at a rapid rate. And, sorry, I'm just trying to go through my material, making sure. I apologize that you didn't have a slideshow presentation this evening. But the proposed cash-in-lie equivalent, um, in your packet in this resolution is set at one hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars per acre foot. That's about a twenty percent increase over the existing cash-in-lie rate of a hundred and two thousand eight hundred per acre foot. One thing that is a little bit different, just to clarify, is that, um, I'm looking to move away from identifying a per-unit cash-in-lie rate, um, just because it just increases the chances of like fat thumbing something. The more times you have to repeat a number in a document, you just increase the chances of making an error. And fundamentally, we're saying it's that acre foot requirement times however many acre feet you're looking to turn in. So it's, um, not in any kind of a different methodology or proposing a different way of talking about it. Um, it's just how it would be reflected in, in the resolution itself. And I am open to answer any questions that you have, um, on this. I did, I actually do want to highlight one thing. There was, in the previous pack of material, in the work section, session material, I made a mistake in the commentary that I put in there and identified that the last update to the cash-in-lie had been in twenty twenty. But there had been a second update, a subsequent update in twenty twenty-one, and I did make sure to put that in this pack of material, and I've acknowledged that oversight on my part, so I do apologize. And do you have any questions related to this proposed resolution?
Any questions? Trusty Gator?
Um, so just wanted to clarify, because I know, I believe it was back when we did the rewrite of chapter thirteen. Um, we reduced the acre feet per share of North Pooter, and this is kind of the other half of that, sorry. Um, this is the other half of that, correct? Where it's kind of, those are, you had mentioned, and when we gone through the work session, that kind of balances out, even though we're reducing the requirements for lots based on usage, we're also reducing the, the yield, because that's what we're seeing for North Pooter. And roughly those balance each other out when it-
There, yeah, there is a balancing effect, absolutely.
Okay. Um, the other question that I have is just clarifying, so um, typically, we had seen, I think you had in here, that the price in twenty-two of a share of North Pooter was roughly two hundred and twenty-four thousand. So if we were to look at our cash-in-lie, if we were to go with the number in the one twenty-four, that would be roughly two hundred and forty thousand for the two acre feet. Because we're now saying that yields two acre feet, so that would roughly be two forty, is that, or two forty-eight? Two hundred, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay.
So, and that doesn't, and assume an inflationary factor as part of that, um,
Right.
methodology that was developed.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we still had that in there, because I know that was one of the big things, is making sure that we had that highlighted. I think those were the only questions, and then this is again, at our discretion, this isn't saying, oh, you just come and ask for cash, and we give that to you. That's still the town saying, hey, we feel like it would be better to have it in this case, but the requirement is still, you have to bring water unless we say otherwise.
Exactly.
Okay.
Thank you. Trusty Teets?
No, I'm just concerned on what this is going to do to encourage development with those fees going as high as they are. But that's my concern.
I like what you're doing. I think we need to cover all aspects on that, and again, building has to pay its own way. And I think you did a good job. Thank you.
I'm good. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Questions?
Thank you.
Uh, are there any comments from the public on this agenda item? No. Okay. May I get a motion and a second on this agenda item, please?
I'll make a motion, motion to approve Resolution Number seventeen dash twenty twenty-three, a resolution establishing raw water dedication requirements for water taps serving residential units and establishing payments for cash in lieu of raw water dedication requirements.
A second?
And I'm assuming no further comments. So may I get a roll call, please?
Certainly, Mister Mayor. Trusty Mason?
Yes.
Trusty Wiegand?
Yes.
Trusty Teets?
No.
Trusty Daly?
Yes.
Trusty Gator?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next is going to be, um, consideration of Resolution Number eighteen dash twenty twenty-three, Resolution of Town of Wellington, Colorado, amending the adopted fee schedule for twenty twenty-three, Ms. Smith.
Thank you again. Welcome back. Um, so the, this is alluded to in, uh, as we spoke about in the repeal of the original ordinance. Um, the town did recently adopt a fee schedule in November of twenty twenty-two. Uh, there's, there has been brought to you one, uh, amendment to date, I believe, and that was in February of this year. So it was in November of twenty twenty-two, and then came back in February of this year with one amendment. And as we've talked about, as we're kind of cleaning things up, and we're especially updating some code requirements and identifying some items that don't necessarily, uh, it's not the most effective way to institute some of those fees. It's best to move them to the fee schedule so they can be reviewed on a more regular basis. Um, a couple of those things that came up as part of, um, bringing this resolution forward for the raw water requirement was that there were, uh, meter fee that was originally, um, adopted with that raw water requirement resolution, uh, in previous years that we're looking to pull out and include that into the fee schedule. And then as part of the municipal chap- chapter thirteen, municipal code updates that were brought forward and adopted at our last board meeting, there were a couple of subsequent changes to the fee schedule that would come from that, where we identified some items to be moved to that fee schedule. So those items that are changing were highlighted in green in the very many pages of fee schedules adopted to the packet, but then also kind of, um, summarized, at least to, to topic-wise, bulleted there in the packet. Um, again, it was, um, updating, or, um, updating, yeah, for the fees removed from, um, code, updating the fee for utility billing, the water disconnect fee, um, the discontinuance and reconnect fee, and then that meter fee. Um, and at that point, I'm happy to take questions, and I have, um, Cherry Campfield here as well, if there's some additional questions.
All right. Trusty Mason?
Uh, Ms. Smith, I was just wondering if you could clarify as far as the reconnection fee goes. I think we had a resident that was, uh, curious about, uh, whether, uh, what, 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 what all that was involved with, and, and what the whole hundred dollars there is, as far as that goes.
So there is, um, you know, probably about an hour of staff time in consideration of, of, you know, two-man crew to go out, disconnect, um, then come back and then reload and go back to turn back on. Um, there's staffing, that she could cover the staff that, what happens in the building side?
We also have to factor in the vehicle time, gas, mileage, wear and tear. Um, in terms of the utility billing coordinator, we have to factor in the time he spends in creating the shut-off list, calling people, um, getting ahold of D N C, all of that. Now, this is a variable because the data that I was working on was with historically how many door knockers we've had sent out, which is averaging about a hundred or more a month. Um, because of the chapter thirteen code changes of us sending out a delinquent letter instead of physically going and changing a door knocker, there is some wiggle room there for your guys' discretion, but that's the data that I had to make the calculation with.
Great, thank you.
Trusty Gator?
No questions. I feel like these are online, well, with other items that we've considered already, so thank you.
Trusty Gator?
Um, so just to kind of follow up, the only real question I had was similar on Trusty Mason's. Um, so thank you for getting the breakdown of that. So we've got an hour of staff time for travel, that's, I mean, it's like on the public works side, that's them going out and back. Um, the vehicle time. And I know just, I think that, I think we should look at what the amount is there. I think the hundred dollars seems high, and that was that the resident had reached out to us. Um, because if you figure out an hour of staff time plus the billing coordinator, now, obviously, if in the past we're sending out a hundred door knockers, so if you just divide, I don't know how long it takes them to make the list, would you say an hour is too long, too short to create the list, like total, or?
Say each shut-off cycle, there's probably about three hours of staff time involved, just in terms of talking with the residents, reaching out, trying to be proactive, creating the list. So it's more than just clicking something-
Got it, and go. And go, okay. Um, so roughly four hours of staff time, but then the three hours that's divided against anyone that's on the list. So I think that, um, and then the vehicle, obviously that's a variable, but even if we just use the standard rate for mileage in the federal, which is, I don't know, is it sixty-five cents?
Sixty-five point five cents.
Sixty-five point five cents, and I think the farthest point that you could get possibly in town would be five miles. I don't think you would, so even we just say ten miles, at six dollars max. Um, so I would say somewhere in the fifty to seventy-five range would probably be more, something I would be willing to look at. Um, so I'd ask that we consider adjusting that down. And then obviously, as we get more data, if we find out we're spending more on that with the new process, we can absolutely revisit it, and it's on the fee schedule, so it's not hard to change that. But I would say let's look at starting that a little bit lower down there, uh, rather than starting at a hundred dollars.
Thank you. Trusty Teets?
I'm going to also agree with starting out at the lower tier. Um, typically, when I look at this and people are needing to have their water reconnected, it's not because they couldn't just get it reconnected, it's because they're struggling to pay their water bill. So the success of a hundred dollar fee on top of whatever they might owe in their water bill, I'd love to see it start at the fifty-dollar range, and then if we see we're losing a massive amount of money on this, then maybe address it then, but we're going to be sucking up those fees again if they just go and reapply for the HUD grant and receive those funds anyways. So I'd like to see it start at fifty and move up from there if we can.
Trusty Wiegand?
Question, uh, how many times you see the same person over and over and over again on this? And is it more that they're, I mean, and I, we got the HUD grant, I think that's a good safety net, correct?
Yeah.
And, uh, but, you know, we, I don't, it might be good to reduce that amount, but I still think we need to cover ourselves, and if it's just because people how are irresponsible at times, not all of them, I mean, probably fifty percent are just really running into hard times, but there could be some irresponsibility that we're funding too, so we need to be careful on that also.
I'll answer your question in this way. I would say that staff's main goal is to work with the resident as much as possible to not get to that point. Um, so there is a lot of contact involved. We have implemented new internal processes where we are working with certain residents where we can break down their bill over time, and, you know, if, if you don't make this payment that we agreed to this month, then we're going to have to reassess it next month to give them the option to not go to that immediate route. Um, so I would say we are doing everything we can internally to prevent just the immediate shut-off route.
And we do reach out to them for letting them know about the HUD and different things on that order too.
Yes.
Right up front.
And now, now that we have the finance staff fully staffed, and we have a dedicated utility billing person, he is, um, really excelled in this role, and he's very, very proactive, and he's very analytical, so he's watching that data, and he's looking at these reports every month. And he is sometimes just reaching out because he sees a problem with the bill. So, you know, we are doing everything we can to make sure that our residents are not undergoing any future hardship that's unnecessary.
Thank you. Trusty Gator? One question I would like clarified is how many of these individuals are, I guess, repeat contacts? Percentage-wise, do you have? Do you have that?
Um, of the eight of ten that get shut, it's variable every month, um, because they'll make that payment to avoid shut-off one month, and then you don't see them for the next month or two.
Okay.
Um, there are consistent, um, accounts on the report. I can pull a specific report that can tell you how many times each account has been on the shut-off list. Um, but there are- But there are certain data trends that are recurring.
Okay. And so on average, ten out of the hundred each month are getting shut off? I mean, I'd I'd be, and then so this calculation is based off the old door hanger method.
Which is part of the reason why we brought you the chapter thirteen code dates to reduce some of that staff time, but that's the data I had to work with. So that's why I say there is some room for discussion if you want to reduce that fee.
Okay. I think it'd be worth discussing dropping it down to seventy five. I want to play the middle. So that way we're not tied between our legs, but at the same time covering cost. Thoughts?
I would agree.
Yeah. So that works for me. I'm just like trying to do math in my head.
I think that's a good compromise.
Yeah, I think let's see where it starts off. And then once we have more data, we can look at assessing. And if it needs to be further great, if it doesn't, then we can leave it.
Perfect. Well, yeah, and I think just to add to that, I think Ms. Campfield mentioned that it was roughly three hours of staff time. That's already, I mean, if we figured twenty five dollars an hour, and I don't know what that staff member is getting paid, but that that already gets us to the seventy five. So I I think that makes sense.
Yeah, it's just the reminder is that that's broken out. So that's like, you know, if I'm, you know, if all of us get shut off here, that three hours of staff time is divided amongst all six, yes, six sitting here. So it's not the full seventy five for each person. And that's where I think if we can just work on getting the data with the new process and what that actually looks like, that would be helpful. That's just what I'm trying to run through my head because then some of that staff time is also involved in communications to the other ninety that aren't shut off. So it's not that a hundred percent of that time is spent on the ten that get shut off. So it's like within that three hours, how much of that is distributed amongst everyone else on the list, too. So that's where I'm just like trying to like the time that, yes, the driving to and from, that's only for those people, but then all the other stuff is kind of shared. So that's where the thought process in my head is. But I'd be open to starting at seventy five and then see where we're at.
Perfect. Any comments from the public on this agenda item? Okay. May I get a motion and a second on this agenda item, please?
I'd like to move that we approve a resolution in the town of Wellington of Colorado, amending the adopted fee schedule for twenty twenty three with the amendments. Hold on. I have to find it now. Three oh three. Thank you, trustee Daly. Amending on page three oh three.
Section thirteen dash one dash one twenty.
Where am I at? Thank you. Yes, code section thirteen dash one dash one twenty reconnect fee follow reconnect fee from one hundred dollars to seventy five dollars.
Second.
May I get a roll call, please?
Certainly. Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, on to the final action item of the evening. It is going to be, where am I here? Contract proposal for the twenty twenty three Old Town Asphalt and Concrete Street Repair.
Good evening. Anthony Work, Engineer Public Works. So tonight I am presenting the Old Town Streets Asphalt and Concrete Repair Contract. It's a CIP project, annual project, although we skipped last year. So the last time the contract was approved was twenty twenty one. This year, we selected five locations throughout Old Town to to do sidewalk repair, no one overlay, curving gutter, drainage pans, things like that in nature. In your bid package or in your board package, I did have a map showing those locations. I don't have a presentation tonight, unfortunately. Generally, you know, we did solicit RFPs, request for bids from qualified concrete contractors as well as asphalt contractors. We had quite a good turnout this year, quite a few more than I was expecting. As you can see in the the bid tabs that are also in that that word package. We ended up selecting L four construction for the concrete contract. There, you have a little background on them. They are new to the project. This was the first time I had seen them come through. So I did spend quite a bit of time talking to him on the phone, called all their references, all very positive references. You know, I spoke with that contractor probably four times over the last two weeks, just making sure that they knew what they're getting into and getting comfortable with them because we do have two other construction projects ongoing and I wanted to make sure I had some confidence in them. So I feel very confident about L four for the concrete work. The asphalt contract, I selected Connel Resources. Again, low bid, their contractor that we're familiar with, they've worked here in town quite a bit. And they did have the asphalt contract for town back in twenty twenty one as well. So that's sort of a a high overview, I guess. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, start with trustee Gator?
Yeah, so I did have just a quick question, like in regards to when we receive RFPs, I know that the two low bids, I mean, Connell's was below us by quite a bit, but it was about fifteen percent below the average and was way below the high bid. Is that fairly normal that we see that range of prices? And are we, are they still doing the same scope of work as everyone else?
Yes, so they are. They are doing the same scope. Everyone bid the exact same scope of work, I believe, on that asphalt contract. On those bids, the first thing you always do is check contractors map. And I did, there is a note at the bottom of that bid tab. I did adjust the the not the quantities, but the price for the base bid. I had an error in my in my bid form. And so some of them had included the hydrant replacement in the base bid, and I just adjusted that for everyone. So it was an apples to apples comparison. I don't I don't change their unit prices or anything like that. I just check the math and make sure everyone's going to bid the exact same way. And everyone's bidding the exact same scope. Sometimes if you do see some discrepancies, you can call them and try and talk through it. But there was none of that this year. It was just, it was just the hydrant was I incorrectly had a one on the base bid. And it really shouldn't just been on the alternate bid. Which, by the way, we are, we are doing the the alternate work as well because prices did come in low. As far as, you know, the spread through the through the bids, I'd say it's probably typical to see that big of a spread. Prices where they are now, it's really difficult to, especially for me to try and get an engineer's estimate on that. Just, you know, everything varies with with oil prices and where you get locked in and things like that, especially with the asphalt. So that that adds what I feel is a little bit more variability to, for instance, the asphalt stuff, asphalt work. Concrete maybe isn't the same. I mean, concrete, everyone uses typically uses the same suppliers such as SRN or Ag Industries. So there's the likelihood of less variability in concrete work than there is in asphalt, although there's probably a bigger spread with the concrete.
There is, yeah, it's like twenty two percent spread versus a fifteen from average for the low and then the highest.
Exactly. And that's and that's what I spend a lot of time talking with people about.
Okay.
They came in really low, unfortunately, and it's it's tough to say you're too low, right?
Right.
And so I spent quite a bit of time talking with them and making sure they're comfortable with their unit prices. Because the last thing I want to do is get in there and have start seeing change orders. I don't want to see that. I don't want to deal with that. And I, you know, they understand that. And they were very comfortable with their unit prices.
Okay. The only other question I had in this would be for Dan. Does this have any impact at all? Because I know Connell is working on other things with planning commission. Does that have any impact with this contractor? There's nothing, they're completely separate things.
These are completely separate things.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Teets, trusty Wigan?
I do want to make a statement. I know that we didn't do this project last year. But from my perspective, this is constant need for work and it's something that we need to continue every year to make sure that we're maintaining our streets. So there's a question out there as to should we or should we not do projects like this? I just want to make it very clear that, you know, we're responsible for the infrastructure, including roads. And I am familiar with a lot of these streets in this project for this round, and there are significant improvements that are needed. So I I am happy that we're looking for and found such low bids. So I do appreciate the work on that. And I'm looking forward to continuing improving our roads.
Are there any questions from the public on this agenda item?
Christine Gator, I just had a question about the quality of work. I don't know who did our work before, but we had issues with the the manhole covers rising over time. And I just don't want that same thing to happen again. But I don't know who did that. I don't know if that's what they're part of what they're doing, the scope of what they're doing. But I'm just saying to consider the quality of what we don't like that has happened on our streets and whoever did that, pick someone else that will do better quality.
Thank you. May I get a motion and a second on this agenda item?
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty three Old Town Street Repair Asphalt and Concrete Concrete Contracts.
Second.
May I get a roll call, please?
Certainly. Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any reports from the town attorney, Mr. Sapiens?
I have no report for you today.
Thank you. Are there any reports from the town administrator?
Well, I'm happy to report that Senate Bill twenty three dash twenty two thirteen was defeated. And we don't have to worry about it right now. Information from CML indicates that they'll be working with those, the proponents of that bill over the next year to see how we can make some adjustments to that and maybe make it more amenable for local government to pursue. There will be more information coming from CML, probably in June. I can work with Mr. Sapiens on providing a report to the trustees on any legislation that affects Wellington. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any staff communications? Additional staff reports? No, all right. On the board reports, start with trustee Wigan?
No report.
Trustee Teets?
No report.
Trustee Gator?
The only thing that I had did want to thank our staff for getting the financial payment of bills and continuing to keep that in there. So charity's still here.
Thanks, you jetted.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you to our finance staff for getting that all together. I think that was all that I had.
Thank you. Trustee Daly?
A couple of things regarding our proclamations. We talked about Kids to Park Day. I wanted to give some more details about that so people know where to go to celebrate with the town of Wellington. National Kids of Park Day, of course, we talked about the proclamation. We have a park and play event scheduled, of course, on that day, May twentieth this year, and it's at Wellville Park. Wellville Park is where the ponds are on the east side near the the condos, I think they're condos, townhomes. I don't know the right word. Okay. But there there ponds there and it's going to be matched with the fishing derby that Kiwanis is doing this year. So it's going to be a full fledged event. There's going to be fishing and all the cool fun stuff that Parks and Rec brings out, like the foam blocks, bouncy things, inflatable toys. Connect four, I'm just looking at the pictures at this point, but there's tons of gear that they bring out for these events and they're super fun. So Wellville Park on the twentieth, and it's from eight AM to one PM. And do note that the parking lot, the little circle parking lot will be reserved for ADA parking. So that's information on National Kids to Park Day. That's how to celebrate. The other one I have is also an event. It's going to be in two days, May eleventh. It's going to be an open house discussing a medical services potentially being available at the Wellington Middle High School and to discuss some of the survey responses that came from the community regarding this endeavor. So if you want to know more information about that, learn more and see what the opportunities might be and whether or not we can participate. Our our Wellington Middle High School is built with facilities that would offer, would be able to offer medical services out of our school. So there is an organization that is willing to pursue that and they want to tell you more information about it. That is going to be on May eleventh at Wellington Middle High School at five thirty to seven PM. And then the last thing I wanted to do, just as an addition to our proclamations were so important this May, so I really appreciate it, of course, celebrating and breaking the stigma of mental health issues. And I'm really proud of the town of Wellington stepping up and taking a stance on that. The other thing that we have a huge problem in Wellington is accessibility to childcare services. And not everybody can find childcare services. And it's hard work. It pays little and it's the most important work. So thank you very much, those childcare providers. We really appreciate you. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Mason, no. I have nothing to report either, other than I like working with you guys and the town's doing great. Thanks for your hard work. Thanks for presenting. Thank you for the, when we kind of shares for being here. Awesome. And the residents that came. Couldn't do without you guys. So appreciate you. All right. Having no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Mr. Clerk, I get a roll call, please.
Certainly.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look, it's so nice outside.